I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the PBD City Council. The City Council will convene on Thursday, July 8th, 2021, to hold a regular meeting at 7:30 for the purpose of discussing any and all business, including both in-person participation and remote participation in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws in pursuant to the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures with provisions relating to the open meeting law. This meeting of the City Council will be conducted via in-person participation as well as by remote participation. Real-time public comment during public hearings can be addressed to the PBD City Council using the Zoom meeting platform for remote access. Users may view the meeting and make a comment or question to the chair via the audio option. This meeting is being televised by PBD Access Television on Comcast Channel 9 and on RCN Channel 15, as well as being recorded by our City Council stenographer. Let us all rise for a moment of silence. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? You've heard the motion by Councilor Gould. On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. The clerk will please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, July 8th, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., and remotely via Zoom on the application from Detour Cars LLC, DBA Auto Factory, 288 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass., requesting to transfer a Class II motor vehicle license to property located at said 288 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under City Calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's office. Zoom information will not be available until the Friday before the meeting. PBD City Council, Councilor Mark J. O'Neil, City Council President.
Mr. Von Zalidis, could you please state your full name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening. And for the record, my name is Ethan Von Zalidis. I'm a attorney practicing in our 2460 Old Street, PBD. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Detour Cars LLC with Nick Marcos and his brother, Mike.
Excuse me, Mr. Von Zalidis. Sorry to interrupt. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Von Zalidis. Could you speak closer to your laptop microphone or computer microphone?
I'm having a tough time hearing you. Can you hear me now? Mark, can you hear me okay now?
It's still having trouble hearing you. If you can just get as close as you can to that microphone and speak louder than you normally would with conversations. Thanks.
All right. I never had that problem before. All right, well, I appear on behalf of Detour Cars LLC. Nick and Michael Marcos are the managers of that business with respect to this evening's request for the transfer of the license. Just for a point of information, Nick Marcos had joined this meeting back during the committee meetings, but he got kicked out and it's not authorizing him to log back in. Is this something that can be corrected now or should I just continue?
Mr. Von Zalidis, once a participant has been kicked out, they can't come back in. They apparently were interrupting the previous meeting. Sorry.
All right. Well, I'm going to continue then. I think that most of the councils are familiar with their business. Back in 2016, they were issued a special permit to construct a new used car building at 156 Newbury Street. They were also granted a transfer of a Class II license to that location. That site has been completely developed and they've been operating now for over four years doing business as Auto Factory. The Marcos brothers recently purchased this property at 288 Newbury Street. Their tenant, Mr. Anthony Alba, was running a used car business there. I believe he was doing business as Broadway Motors. Mr. Alba has since vacated the premises. And since the property has the benefit of the required special permit, the Marcos brothers desire to continue to utilize this property for the sale of used motor vehicles. To that end, they have entered into an agreement to purchase the Class II license that's currently held by Allen's Autotrim. Obviously, that purchase is subject to obtaining approval for our transfer. I think that most of the councils are probably familiar with this property. It does contain a one-story commercial building. That building has about 8,300 square feet of area. The building sits on a lot of land that contains a little over 18,000 square feet. About 8,200 of that footage is in the city of PBD and a little over 10,000 square feet of it is in the town of Danvers. The Marcos brothers are going to run this business very similar to the way they run their existing facility on Newbury Street. There's no major type of engine repair or automotive work. They just perform basic, small mechanical work. Due to the size of the property, it's not going to be a high-volume business. They'll probably average anywhere from two to three customers on site at any one time. And they anticipate having only two employees on site at any one time. I do have Nick Marcos on my cell phone on speaker with me this evening, and together we'll try to answer any questions that either the council or any of the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Von Zalidis. And just to clarify, the Zoom application, once someone is kicked out of a meeting, it's a process that we can't let them back in. So it's nothing against him, but certainly he was chatting and we had to take him out of the other meeting, so I apologize. So at this time, I'd like to ask if any members of the general public would like to speak either in favor of this special permit? Are there any members of the general public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, and there's also no one on the Zoom application at this time. Are there any members of the general public who would like to speak in opposition of this application? Are there any members of the general public who would like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing no one either in person or in the Zoom application, I'll turn it over now to Councilor Sassler. And then I guess if you could, Councilor Sassler, I just wanted to see if you could accept a motion, make a motion to receive and approve the transfer, item 8A. Councilor Sassler.
Yes, Council President. Under suspension rules, motion to receive item 8A, please, under suspension rules.
Excuse me, Councilor Sassler. Just to make sure, I heard you make sure we want to receive and approve the transfer.
I'm sorry, to approve, receive and approve item 8A.
Thank you, Councilor Sassler. On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sassler.
Thank you. Thank you. So as you folks, just to point a quick, just, I don't know if people are having a hard time hearing, but basically, I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I'm very happy that Mr. Marcos is here before us again this evening, him and along with his brother, Mark Marcos, Mike Marcos, excuse me. They purchased 156 Newbury Street, which is known as the Auto Factory. That's the car dealership. That's right at the beginning of 95 into Sex with Route 1 South. I think of those who are familiar with the property. They took a really piece of dilapidated property. They worked with the neighbors and they were supported by the neighbors. They built a, you know, a beautiful building. They've been very successful there, and I think they really kind of changed the face of what a local used car dealership could look like as opposed to a corporate, like a corporate max, not Comax. They've done a great job up there. The property that they purchased, for clarification, at 1288 Newbury Street, that is the first piece of property that you come into PBD. It's right after the old Circuit City, the old Rocky Stone Yard entrance. That's the building that they purchased. They've gone in there. They've actually started to clean up, and I think you've heard me say many times, we had a couple of different transfers of this license, and every time I really asked the applicant to, you know, to try and make that piece of property look presentable as it was the first piece of property when someone crossed and has that little sign now entering PBD. So I have the utmost confidence in both Nick and his brother, and I will be supporting this application tonight for those following reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sassler. Any questions from fellow councils? Councilor Turco and then Councilor Schress, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just threw you to Councilor Sassler. This was probably already said a dozen times, just I couldn't hear what Ethan was saying. Is this the same property that, half of it's in Danvers and half of it's in PBD that we approved a few years back?
Councilor Sassler.
That's correct.
Thank you. And did Danvers already approve their part? I just, I'm trying to recall what happened at the last meeting, and I thought we made them go to Danvers first. And I'm not saying that we should do that now. I'm just looking for some reminders of what occurred, and so we don't go back and forth, I'll just ask you. I thought at that point, three years ago, we transferred this to the Marcos brothers and Mr. Alba was out of it at that point.
Councilor Sassler.
Thank you. So they just purchased a property. They were never involved with this piece of property at all. We had transferred the license. Mr. Alba was the original, he was the original first leasie of the property. He did not own it. Then we had two more transfers after him, so that they're new to this property. As I said, they're buying the property, so that's why they're going to be running it. And they have, as we saw earlier, they have a used car license they've already acquired on their own. As far as your specific question regarding Danvers, I don't recall that because this is, this would be the fourth one, but what makes me happy, Councilor Turco, is they're going to own it and they're not looking to flip it, sell it, lease it to anybody else. And as you can see in the, also in the application, what makes me feel comfortable is there is the previous map of 24. So that's what, that's what it says here on the map that you see here. So I don't know. I assume they do everything by the book. They'll go to Danvers. I don't know if the attorney can speak for them, but I don't know if we, I can't recall if we had to go to Danvers first or not, quite frankly.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, the last question that just dawned on me. At one point, I think this is the same property, there were some Jersey barriers that were blocking the fire apparatus from getting through, and that you would come back and to ask them to remove that to prevent that. Has that been taken care of? If I have the same, the right property?
I believe it's the same property. There was problems, there was one barrier at one point in time. Yes, there was. There was also, they weren't following the map, the map of where the car should be parked. I had issues with that. So that is the same property. So as I said, that's why I'm happy that they're now taking it over because I know that they'll follow the rules.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Councilor Schress.
Thank you, Council President. Threw you to Councilor Sassler only because I really didn't, wasn't able to hear clearly what the attorney was saying. And Councilor Turco kind of answered some of my questions, what the property was. Are they keeping the other property too? Are they operating both facilities? Do you know?
It is my understanding, and counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that yes, this is a second location. They are definitely putting on keeping that first location as well.
Great. And again, this is kind of a unique piece of property because part of it is in Danvers and the license is because they're doing business with the existing building in PBD. That's why they come in front of, in front of us, correct?
Councilor Sassler.
I believe that is correct. Yes, that's why.
And I got to tell you, a few weeks ago, I'm happy to see that somebody else has taken over. And it is hard to follow in just the five and a half years that I've been on this board. I know there's, you know, multiple people coming in and out and not knowing, and all giving promises that they were going to keep up the property and do it right, and they haven't, in my opinion. Recently, I went by and saw the, where it goes 1 through 12 parking spots, they had doubled up back-to-back, bumper-to-bumper there. And I was about to car here, and then the next day I went by and everything was gone. So I have full confidence that the two brothers here, again, by their past history of cleaning up a site and making it look nice, that they're going to continue to do that. But again, just keeping, hopefully they keep in mind of the issues that they have did in the past with more cars than they should have in the parking situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Schress. Any other councils? Councilor Manning-Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, to you, I was City Council President in 2011, 10 years ago, and I thank my lucky stars that I was the City Council President 10 years ago before Zoom. I really feel for you tonight, but you know, you'll survive. You're doing, you're doing a good job. It's rough up there. Certainly Zoom has, has really made it even tougher for the City Council President. So that being said, the, I'm not a big fan of used car lots on Route 1, and I always remember what Councilor Liakis would be adamant about is that we need to raise the bar of businesses that come to Route 1. We shouldn't just say, oh, it's Route 1 and allow any, you know, any, an old used car lot come in. We really need to raise the bar. So I always remember that and I keep that in mind. But in this particular, these owners of Auto Factory, I mean, what a business they run. The building's beautiful. They really cleaned up the area and they really raised the bar for not only a used car lot on Route 1, but certainly businesses on Route 1. It's really cleaned up and improved the area. So when I heard that they wanted to expand in this particular location where we have had issues, I was very pleased to hear that. And I'm glad that they are expanding, and I'm sure that they will bring the top-notch operation to that location and continue to raise the bar of the businesses that we are operating and allowing on Route 1. So I'm very pleased with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Manning-Martin. Any other councils want to, Councilor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. Threw you to Attorney Von Zalidis. Hello, Attorney, how are you?
I'm doing all right. Did you hear me okay?
I didn't hear you. I just wanted to let, please pass on the same regards to your clients that Councilor Manning-Martin mentioned, that the Marcos brothers are doing a nice job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Any other councils would like to speak at this time? Councilor Sassler.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sassler.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Detour Cars LLC, DBA Auto Factory, 288 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass., requesting to transfer Class II motor vehicle license to property located at said 288 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass. So move.
On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Sassler.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Matzoulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to the floor.
It's like Charlie Brown.
We'll now move to reports of committees, and the first report will be the committee of the whole, as we all know. Well, in attendance tonight was all councils with the exception of Councilor Welton. The first agenda item was supposed to be a discussion of the local represencing standards process and include a presentation from the Secretary of State's office on that. Obviously, the technology, technical difficulties we had would not allow us to carry that meeting through. At this point in time, we could reschedule because I want councils to hear, but certainly I do want to just give a, just a quick overview in that the working group that we have, that has going to work for PBD, has a meeting set up for July 22nd to begin the process of looking at the census, the rough census numbers, the map and the population, and try to come up with, you know, the reworking of what is, you know, due to the map, if you will, the voting precincts, especially the wards. So what I would ask councils to do is to, you know, for any initial questions, comments, concerns, or anything you want, I would submit those questions to the working group through Clerk Danforth in writing so that they have that material, your initial thoughts, comments, suggestions, in writing from you so that they can begin the process of analyzing this. It's going to, it takes some bit, but there is a quick timeline. Conversely, if councils do not have any issues, questions, or concerns, they should also send an email through, to the working group through Clerk Danforth stating that they have no issues, questions, or concerns. That way, this is not to tie anyone down, but just to get everything out in front of them so when they begin the process, they have, they can do it with full concept of what people, I guess, initial thoughts are. And I know that it's, we're asking people to look at this, and it's just, you know, something that we're going to start, but I think it's important for councils to get their thoughts out before this process starts. Councilor Sassler.
Thank you, Council President. So the meeting on July 22nd, is that a meeting that the public can attend? And also, what time and the location?
Councilor Sassler, great question. The working group is meeting in private at this point. They're not doing a public hearing as they go through their process and ultimately come back to the, to the council for approval of what they kind of recommend. That would be a committee of the whole public hearing, if you will.
And my only concern was that I looked at the data, all the paper we got. I believe that it's August is the timeline, that the state is looking for the working committee to make a recommendation by. So we're going to have one meeting in August. I'm just very concerned about the public having input. I know the council is going to have the opportunity of input because I did have some, I did have people reach out to me and ask about it, so I will just, with Clerk Danforth is here, you know, I think the public needs to have their bite at the apple if they want it. I don't know if that'll be the committee of the whole, what the opportunity will be, but obviously that. And the only other request I'd have, Clerk Danforth, and I will put some comments in writing, but I think it's critical that the working committee have the existing map and the proposed map because they're vastly different, as you know already, and I think that's an important tool that they should have amongst the other tools that they'll be using.
Thank you, Councilor Sassler. And just to, to just quickly run through, they, the working group, well, actually, the deadlines have been set by the state. So we're, now the actual process is to form a working group. Working group will produce a simulation warden precinct map based on the 2020 data, census data estimates. And then by September 2021, the September, the official data, end of September, the data is supposed to be released, the official from the U.S. Census. And so once again, the working group will use that data to produce a map that presents the actual numbers instead of estimates. This timeline is tight. Final steps are in October 2021, that the updated map, if you will, is to be presented and recommended by the local working group and submitted to the council, City Council, for approval. It then goes to the state for, you know, an independent board. So that, that is the tight timeframe. Every state and town, excuse me, every city in town is working on the same jurisdiction and timeframe.
But just to speak, point of clarification, I'm sorry, I put, you referenced a lot of meetings, but is it not my recollection that it is August that, I know that September they're going to come out with the official data, working off a proposal, but I believe the working group does have to have the proposal done from a working group, and it says now through August 2021, let me see, okay, so local approval, we have to October 2021. Okay, it gets a little bit confusing, so I guess we do have a little bit of time. Thank you, Council President.
Yeah, that's just the timeframe that I looked at, and certainly we didn't hear that presentation, but all councils have received this in many emails, so it is kind of a lot to digest, and I certainly, this is new for me. I wasn't on the council 10 years ago when the census. But Councilor Schress?
Thank you, Council President. Just for my understanding, and I think most people, when it comes in front of the City Council for approval, at that time, is, are we allowed to make suggestions of tweaking the maps, whatever it comes in, from the committee, the board, the group that's meeting? Do we have time then to say, this is our input? Or is our input only in the beginning when we submit it? I just don't know if, if we don't like it, we don't approve it. Say the City Council here, you know, overwhelmingly saying, no, this isn't, this isn't good. We don't approve it. What happens then? If you know, I know it's a lot.
Also, Councilor Schress, great question. I'll answer based on the presentation that I, it was a presentation they did, you know, a couple of, probably a month ago. So my recollection is certainly, the reason why we have the working group is from all the different folks is they're supposed to do the lion's share of the work because they, you know, there's obviously transparency and the state does not want to run into issues where councils are drafting their own, you know, wards or precincts or whatnot, any kind of that. So the, once again, we're going to be able to provide our initial questions, things they should consider, whether we're making sure that we have the, the voting places, polling places remain in the same wards. We don't want to have those types of things, but there's a lot of work to get done given the population shifts that have happened. But once again, when it comes to us, we will have to approve it, but that's why I'm saying like initial concerns and things. I think what I, what's going to happen is once the working group comes and does its initial, I'm calling it, you know, analysis and comes with it, I'd like to have a committee of the whole meeting before the end of August to have them come to us so that we don't at last minute say, well, what about this? What about that? So certainly, we, I just want to, I'm taking up too much time answering this, but in terms of, we're due to, as you know, to go on break until the end of August. So if the council, if it's the will of the council, we could meet either August 5th or August 12th. Do I have those dates right? Before, anyways, before, a few weeks before we come back as a council, because what I think we want to do is make sure councils have, you know, an ability to just kind of give additional, initial feedback. That's just my thought. Certainly, if the councils believes we should have that, reschedule the presentation. I'm more than willing to do that, but we are going on break, so.
Just one.
Councilor Schress, still have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would, I would suggest that. I think that's a good recommendation. I believe it's a recommendation coming from, from you, Council President, that to be able to have another meeting, I, I think this is way too important not to make sure we have a good eyes on it, and this is a huge job for that working committee to do. You know, we as councils, certainly as ward councils, know the particular areas in the city, so I just, I would welcome that, a meeting in August. I think it's important, and I'm glad to see that there is an opportunity before it comes in front of us to vote on it, to see it. Thank you.
Councilor Schress, just to be clear, I, if it's the will of the council to have a meeting over break, that's the will of the council, but I'll turn to Councilor Neville.
Just a suggestion, when dealing with a working group, it's good for the working group to communicate back. My suggestion would be that the working group, based on the information they get, and there's a very strong chance that they'll be able to accommodate a lot of the requests or issues that come up from the council. If that's the case, the working group can report back to the council president. You can set a committee of the whole hearing based off of that, and we can go from there, and we can drive it based off of what they're able to do. That would be my, just, that would be my suggestion, instead of just, you know, setting public, you know, committees of the whole that we might not be able to close it out. Just a thought. Thank you.
I'm open to suggestions because this is new for many of us to go through this process, and we also want to do it in the utmost transparency that, so that this is being done by the working group and then we ultimately approve, but we're, you know, we obviously have to be very careful about how we approach this. Any other councils have any thoughts on this? Councilor Matzoulis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to think back when I was on the council, when we did redistrict the wards before, and if I remember correctly, we don't have much of a say, so I think there's a little research you got to do, Counselor, and find out if we can have meetings and how many we can have, and exactly what authority or power we have, because I remember when Buttonwood Lane, Dahlia Road, Watera Road, Fairmont, Chandler's Ice Cream, that whole area was my ward back when I first got. area was my ward back when I first got elected, and I was very upset, because I finally got to know everyone in that area, and we redistricted, and the next thing I know, they were gone. And to me, that was a crucial part of my ward at the time. And I remember being with the council and making a huge issue of this and not being able to do anything about it, and that kind of bothered me. It was like, this is how I saw it. I mean, other people may have seen it differently. The people that are putting this together have the authority to do it, and where do we stand on this? I'll tell you, if we don't have a coalition trying to make changes if we need it, nothing's going to happen, because I remember I wanted that neighborhood, and there was no, not even any discussion about it. I only know we came in here, next thing we know, we voted, and that was it. The following year, that area was no longer in my ward. So I'm just giving you the input I, and the knowledge I had about it, so I hope it's helpful. I don't know if it is or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mitsoulas. And to stay, to be clear, when I talked about a meeting, it would be to receive the, the initial working from the working group. We cannot select our wards, our, that's what they're trying to avoid. We're not gerrymandering, and I'm not picking this street because I grew up with everyone or something like that. So the working group is doing the lion's shares. At this point, I'd like to, as, you know, Allison Danforth, our clerk, has been intimately involved with trying to, to get the working group, you know, formalized, I'd like to ask her to kind of give an overview to touch on things that I may have missed, or she wants to comment on. Allison?
Thank you, Counselor. So the state has given us a map, they've given us the block maps, and the block maps basically lay out, I'm going to say blocks, but they don't all look like blocks, and they all have numbers with them, within them, and each ward is, in precinct, are to be balanced. So they give us a starting point, and we need to take into consideration any local needs such that you all would know, you know, if you're trying to keep a specific neighborhood together. But any change you make in one ward or one precinct, it has a domino effect, so, and we can only change so much. And when I say we, I mean, the working group with the council. So the process that we will lay out is to just start with seeing what it looks like from where it is now, which we haven't started to do. And we want to make sure all polling locations are in the correct place, and we have to take into consideration all of the 40Bs that will be coming online, because that will change what that map looks like right now. So community development will have to let us know which ones we'll be adding between now and October, and that will change some of the lines. Once you all give us your suggestions, comments, opinions, we take those into consideration and, and see what we come up with. Now, any map that we do come up with, the first thing we'll do is send it off to get a recommendation from the state, because if they're not going to go with any of those recommendations, we're not going to put that map before the council at a committee of the whole, and the process will continue to play out that way. The council will not be voting on this until October. There aren't going to be any motions in the committee of the whole with regard to the maps. You make suggestions, so. And like I said, these are just estimates of numbers. We're not going to have any hard numbers until the end of September into October.
Great overview and provides more color for the councilors. If we could, I'd like to make sure that we receive Communication 8H. Removed. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. The second agenda item regarding the committee of the whole was a discussion of, you know, future public hearings, including use of remote participation. Had some great discussion about some of the challenges that we have had recently with technology, certainly tonight's earlier part of the, the committee hearing, very, very good. And people, for the most part, all councilors were in favor of continuing the hybrid, both, you know, in-person, for councilors meeting here, as well as the public coming to attend Wigan Hall, and also allowing continued remote participation for both the public and councilors who may not be able to attend the person, the meetings in person via the Zoom application. So the gist was that we want to continue, we certainly are going to work on the technology challenges that we've had recently, the last few meetings, and get those straightened out. But we did have two motions that came out of the, the committee of the whole, and at this time, I'd like to read both of them and offer them up for consideration. The first motion was, out of the meeting tonight, was the PBD City Council will continue holding its meetings in person at Wigan Hall with continued remote participation by Zoom for the members of the public, as well as any councilors if necessary. Applicants or their representatives will be required to attend their special permit hearings in person at the Wigan Auditorium. So entertain a motion on that. On the motion, roll call, roll, please.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries, 10 to 0.
Thank you. The second motion was made by Counselor Turco to request community development to have the consultant of the audio system purchase for the Wigan Hall attend a city council meeting to address our repeated sound issues. As. Just to clarify, make sure, Clerk Danforth, to, to request community development to have the consultant of the audio system, I believe it's Signet, if I'm saying it right, attend a city hall meeting to address our repeated sound issues, so that we can have adequate sound for both the public and councilors. On the motion. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. And for good order, if we can accept, someone move to receive Item 8M. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Thank you. That concludes the report of the committee of the whole. Will now move to Chairman, Finance Chairman McGinn for his report from Finance. Chairman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee of the PBD City Council met earlier this evening. Present for the committee was Counselor Gould, Counselor Manning Martin, Counselor Rosignol, Counselor Turco, and myself as chair. All other councilors were present, with the exception of Counselor Welton. There were four items on the agenda, however, two items, Items B and C, are going to be taken up at a future finance committee meeting. The first item that we addressed, Item A, was a transfer of funds request, cable fund expense for $120,000. This is a fairly routine process whereby the money comes in from the cable providers, and under the agreement with the cable providers is earmarked for PBD Access TV. Motion was made as followed by Counselor Gould move to approve transfer request from Receipts Reserve Cable Fund, account number 270000033017, an amount of $120,000, to cable fund expense, account number 270000053007, in an amount of $127,000, $120,000. Mr. President, that motion passed unanimously. I now bring that to the full council for consideration. So moved.
Thank you, Chairman McGinn. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, roll, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries, 10 to 0.
Chairman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item was a request from the Building Commissioner to update some fees for the Zoning Board of Appeals and for the services of the Sealer of Waits and Measures. These were outlined in a communication from the Building Commissioner, Mr. Tellrico, in a communication to the council, June 14, 2021. Mr. Tellrico subsequently found out that the ZBA fees don't actually come under the purview of the, of the city council. That's something that is, that he will bring to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so he withdrew that portion of the request, but asked us to consider the balance of the request, which was some increases in the Waits and Measures fees, which have not been adjusted for a very long time. I believe he said 2008. With the explanation of how these fees stack up to the current fees and to other neighboring communities, there was a motion made, and I'm going to do something, Mr. President, a little unusual, because the motion that was made was to adopt these fees, and the reason the motion was made that way was because there is, there was a little, I'm not sure right, what the right word is, ambiguity, confusion as to whether the, the actual fees are part of the ordinance or not. It was clarified to me by the clerk after the, after we closed the meeting, that they are part of the ordinance. So we're not just simply updating the list that's, that's on file at the clerk's office, but we're updating the ordinance itself. So if there's no objection from any of the committee members or any of the other councilors, I'm going to adjust the motion from what was voted on at Finance. It's just a slight modification, and it will be as follows. Move to draft and advertise a change to the appropriate section of the ordinances of the city of PBD in accordance with the Building Commissioner's proposed Waits and Measures fees, as indicated in the Building Commissioner's communication dated June 14, 2021. So moved. Mr. President, on the motion, Counselor Manning Martin had raised a point during the discussion about, given that there had been such a lag in the amount of time that we had last looked at this, that it really had kind of set the city back in terms of the, how these fees stack up to the neighboring communities. So she had suggested a periodic review, so I would add that, I will add that to the motion, but through you to Counselor Manning Martin, I don't know if you want to add anything at this point.
No, the, thank you for that, I appreciate it, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, through you. And the suggestion or recommendation from the Building Commissioner was three years, so subject to review every three years. It'd be great. Thank you so much.
So to that end, I would add to the end of the motion, modify the motion, and to further amend such section to include language indicating such fees be subject to review every three years. So moved.
On the motion, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, roll, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries, 10 to 0.
Chairman McGinn. Thank you, Mr. President. That's the report. Thank you very much, Chairman McGinn. Will now move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Gould.
Motions, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive Item 8G and refer to the licensing board, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive Item 9B, block party, specifically 33 Benevento Circle to 43 Benevento Circle, so moved and approved.
Counselor Sassla, amend your motion to just, all papers being in order.
Yes, all papers being in order, excuse me.
Thank you, Counselor Sassla. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Sassla.
No further motions, thank you.
Counselor Shrest.
Thank you, Counselor President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to move to accept Item 9B, specifically to Walding Buttonwood, Fitz, Buttonwood Road for block party with all papers in order. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Shrest.
Thank, thank you, and the, I'd like to move on Item 10B, ordinance that is, I believe, is ready for adoption. Want to read it?
10B for motion, motion to adopt is advertised?
As advertised. Do I need to read the, the motion and, no?
No, Counselor, you just have to, the motion would be to adopt 10B as advertised.
Thank you. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Shrest.
Thank you. Just one more point of information. The kickoff to 4th of July that was supposed to happen in Ward 4, well, it got a little soggy, but we are moving it to this Saturday. I know we thought about just Friday, but this Saturday, same time, same place, same venue, we're going to have a magician at 7:00, following the movie at about 8:15. I'm asking people who'll come about 6:00, pack a cooler and a dinner basket, set up a spot there. There will be some fun things, giveaways, snacks for the movie, popcorn, ice cream, candy, all the great things that people love to eat, and as I move forward, I'm, hopefully, I'm going to be able to add more to it, too. But so, mark your calendar, calendar down again, folks. Love to see councilors, you know, more than welcome to come and enjoy Emerson Park at, starting at 6:00 this Saturday. And with that, I also would just like to recognize the, the passing of Mrs. Duff, the, the mom of Eileen and Mary Duff here, long, long family, longstanding family here in PBD. If you read the obituaries, you were so impressed, I was so impressed, with Mrs. Duff and all the things she has, had done. So I just would like for the, if the clerk could send a condolence letter to the family recognizing just such a wonderful family here in PBD, and condolence of their loss. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Shrest.
And that would be all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shrest. Thank you for recognizing her. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8B and refer to industrial and community development, so moved.
B, B's in boy. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8D and set up a public hearing. I'm doing this on your behalf, Mr. President, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor McGinn. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, Item 7A is a communication from his honor of the mayor regarding the redistricting process and some legislation that's been advanced. And he is asking that the council respectfully join him in his opposition to this legislation and help protect municipal decision-making on local precinct lines. I trust that everybody's had an opportunity to read this, and I would make a motion that we requested the city clerk draft a letter from the City Council of support consistent with the mayor's position on this matter. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed?
Mr. President, can we get a roll call vote on that just?
Yes, Councilor McGinn. On the motion, any discussion? Roll call, roll, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yeah.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to make a motion to receive 8C, Mr. Chairman, so moved.
You've heard the motion. On the motion, any, excuse me, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive Item Number 9A, an entertainment license, motion to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple motions, Mr. Chairman. I had a very busy week this week, and if anybody thinks the councilors aren't out there working, I spent more time this week out on the road at my constituents' home and property than I did at my job this week. And this is, has been pretty constant. I'm not complaining because it's my job, but if I don't say something about it, the public won't know it. Every city councilor here puts a lot of time into their job through the request of their constituent. No one complains about it, and I'm very proud of this council, and I know the work they put into it. And I'm not even going to mention what Tom Gould did for me this week. I'll just leave it at that. I'd like to make a motion, first of all, I'd like to send Public Works over to Dobbs Road and take a look at every sign on that road. There are signs missing, there are signs that need to be replaced, and it's, it's a road that needs attention. And one of the signs that, on one end of the street, there's a stop sign, on the other end, there's no stop sign. There's no name on the street itself. I want to see a sign put up that says Dobbs Road, so when people drive by, they'll know. And also, there have been trucks going through Dobbs Road that have been knocking down cable lines and wires, and they've got to put a stop to that. I've got a ton of calls on that this week, and I was getting upset at it. On one side of the, on one side of the street, there's a sign that says Commercial Vehicle Over, Five-Ton Excluded. On the other end of the street, there's no sign. They're coming in on the other side, so let's put a stop to that. Let's please get the signs up. That's one motion.
Councilor Mazzulis, on the motion?
Yes.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzulis.
What's it about? Oh, okay. We have a late communication here also, Mr. Chairman. It's about the Pika Plant, and it's a late communication. I'd like to make a motion to receive. So moved.
On the motion to accept late communication number two, on the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzulis.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to sound forceful, and it's only, I'm getting a little frustrated over some of the calls I am getting. My own street, I live on Sprague Street, I'm making an emergency preamble. There's only 10 houses on my street. On the opposite side of my street, the sidewalks are all, not all of them, but every other house, they're buckling, and people cannot even walk on that, on that side of the street. And I'd like to see, make emergency preamble, have Public Works go down there and straighten that side of the sidewalk out. And I have a lot of sidewalks that I am going to start making emergency preambles on because I'm getting more calls than I have ever called, ever gotten. So I will only do Sprague Street for now. If we could get Public Works down here to work on that. So moved. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? I didn't, well, ironic, I did not hear that. So we have, on the emergency preamble, roll call, roll, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, I went to Roland Road today. I got a call from a constituent there, that's off Abington, and it's at the end of Abington. And I know the area because when I was going to Carroll School, I used to play there as a kid. And there's, at the end of Roland Road, there's a cliff on the end of the road that was blocked off many years ago, and it's a very dangerous location. And if you remember, which the older councilors in here that live here a while would probably remember, there was a vehicle that went off that cliff in the 90s. Well, anyways, what my motion is, the city owns a piece of that property, and the city owns the portion that you have to go over the city's property to fall off the cliff, let me put it that way. Now, what I'm making a motion for is to have the city go down there and clean up the grass and weeds that are growing on that property, and also clean up the fence where the sign is. There's a sign on that fence that says, "Keep off this property, and it's dangerous beyond the fence." And I'm not going to make that an emergency preamble, but I think it is an emergency. And I would like the Public Works to go down there and clean it up now and not a month from now. So moved. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Mazzulis. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive, receive and approve Item 8E on behalf of Councilor Welton.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive Item 8K, and I'd like to refer that to the Public Services Committee that I believe the clerk is going to schedule for, at our next available meeting in August. That's in regards to the lights at County and Summit Street. I know Chief Elliott said that they're working on addressing it, but in the event it's not, I'd like to have it on the agenda for discussion because it needs to be addressed.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive and approve, all papers being in order, item 9B, Woodlawn Street. I'm going to make some changes to that. Council Welton did receive an email from the petitioner that he inadvertently put the wrong addresses down there. He has notified the clerk, as well as the signing parties in favor of the block party. What he meant to put there is from Woodlawn Avenue on St. Anne's Avenue, from, between Number 26 and 27. So the party will take place on St. Anne's Avenue from the intersection of Woodlawn to Number 27. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Turco.
Thank you. And I did discuss briefly with the clerk Danforth that there was some miscommunication with some of the 4th of July block parties, and I don't know how to rectify it, but the, at least two in Ward 1, DPS didn't respond to their request for the block parties, and they claimed that they didn't receive those, and that may be the case since the DPW director and some of his staff were away. So I'm wondering if there's a, if we should, you know what? I'll make it easy. I'll request that the DPW director appoints a contact person for block party so that doesn't happen again.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Turco.
No further mo, oh, Mr. President, move to receive and adopt as advertised Item 10A after a long, lengthy process.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Turco.
No further message, motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Councilor Rozignol.
Thank you, Council President. No motions, orders, or resolutions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rozignol. Councilor Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8F and 8I and refer to the Legal Affairs Subcommittee. So moved.
On the, no. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Melville.
Anything else that needs to be received? I lost count on them. Move to receive Item 8J, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. And if someone could move to receive late communication, number one, the block party request.
So moved.
On the motion, I would just like to make a, put the same conditions we've had on this block party in the past, so move to approve this, if I can make the motion, entertain a motion to move approval of this block party, subject to all papers being in order with the following conditions. One, the block party hours will be from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Number two, all live music or other entertainment must end at 9:30 p.m. Number three, a police detail is required from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. and must be paid by the applicant prior to the event and no later than Friday, August 13th. So moved. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
I just had a couple other things.
Councilor Melville.
First off, I just wanted to say great job to the Ward councilors for their 4th of July parties. Weather wasn't great, and I know Council Charis has something else planned as well. And then also, I just wanted to put everybody's radar, we're, the Welch School Building Committee met today. Councilor McGinn and myself are on that, and the council will be a part of any, the approval process with the City School Committee while working with the Mass School Building Authority. I have to say, it's very impressive what they're doing with, they are pulling every, they're stretching every dollar, and I think the return is pretty, is going to be pretty good for that Welch School community in the city. But just put that on your radar, that that, there will be a joint meeting in the next 45 days, roughly. What the timing is would be up to the council president and school committee member Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn is the chair of the building committee, so I know you guys will communicate that. But I just want to put that on everybody's radar. Other than that, I hope everybody else has a nice weekend and a great July into August. I'm sure we'll see each other plenty in August. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. And as a reminder, the City Council will be on summer break until August 26th. I hope you all enjoy the rest of your summer. I have no motions, orders, or resolutions, but I do want to thank the council for their patience, especially with all the technology challenges this evening. I now entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. You've heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. This meeting is now adjourned.